All right, guys, congratulations and welcome aboard.
And I assume we have no public presentations listed, so we'll move into police.
Yes, sir, I'd like to take a moment to recognize one of our finest. You know, in my time with the Cincinnati Police Department, I worked with a lot of great detectives, including Denny Lukin, who's in the front row. But Detective Erica Hott, who's with us here tonight, I would rank her right up there with any of the detectives I worked with in the past. She's just an outstanding detective. And I'd like to point out a couple incidents, high-profile incidents she was recently involved in. So the first was in October of 21. Detective Hott received information from the Internet Crimes Against Children organization advising her that a user in our township had uploaded two inappropriate videos known to be child pornography. So Detective Hott began working the case to investigate this crime. She obtained subpoenas for the suspect's account information, which led her to a 33-year-old male subject, Brandon Campbell, who lived and worked within Pierce Township. After the interview, Detective Hott got a search warrant, which allowed her to seize Mr. Campbell's electronic devices to send for forensic information. And there were approximately 4,000 pieces of child sexual materials that were both still images and videos recovered on Mr. Campbell's electronic devices. And if you remember, the last trustee meeting, you approved a large-scale computer, which allows Detective Hott to investigate these kind of crimes. Detective Hott was able to get a 52-count indictment for pandering sexually-oriented material involving a minor. These are felonies of the second degree. Each count carries the potential for up to five years in prison and a requirement to be on the sex offenders' registration list. So this dangerous individual was taken off the streets, thanks to Detective Hott. And then, most recently, on July 22 of this year, a few weeks ago, the US bank at 1259 East Ohio Pike in Pierce Township was robbed. The suspect presented a note to the teller demanding money and stating he had a firearm. Detective Hott responded to the scene, the suspect got away. She was able to obtain biological evidence that was left behind.
I'm wondering, is that like the final test? You can follow, but it's like a number of tests. So we took cards down and flipped it over.
Craig, do you want me to get in there?
And what have the rest?
All right, guys, congratulations and welcome aboard.
All right, so we'll hop back on track here. And I assume we have no public presentations listed, so we'll move into police. Chief Rocksmann?
Yes, sir. I'd like to take a moment to recognize one of our finest. You know, in my time with the Cincinnati Police Department, I worked with a lot of great detectives, including Denny Lukin, who's in the front row. But Detective Erica Hot, who's with us here tonight, I would rank her right up there with any of the detectives I worked with in the past. She's just an outstanding detective. And I'd like to point out a couple incidents, high-profile incidents she was recently involved in. So the first was in October of 21. Detective Hot received information from the Internet Crimes Against Children Organization, advising her that a user in our township had uploaded two inappropriate videos known to be child pornography. So Detective Hot began working the case to investigate this crime. She obtained subpoenas for the suspect's account information, which led her to a 33-year-old male subject, Brandon Campbell, who lived and worked within Pierce Township. After the interview, Detective Hot got a search warrant, which allowed her to seize Mr. Campbell's electronic devices to send for forensic information. And there were approximately 4,000 pieces of child sexual materials that were both still images and videos recovered on Mr. Campbell's electronic devices. And if you remember, the last trustee meeting, you approved a large-scale computer, which allows Detective Hot to investigate these kind of crimes. Detective Hot was able to get a 52-count indictment for pandering sexually-oriented material involving a minor. These are felonies of the second degree. Each count carries the potential for up to five years in prison and a requirement to be on the sex offenders' registration list. So this dangerous individual was taken off the streets, thanks to Detective Hot. And then, most recently, on July 22nd of this year, a few weeks ago, the US Bank at 1259 East Ohio Pike in Pierce Township was robbed. The suspect presented a note to the teller demanding money and stating he had a firearm. Detective Hot responded to the scene. The suspect got away. She was able to obtain biological evidence that was left behind. The next day, Detective Hot compared her unknown suspect with an unknown suspect from a bank robbery that occurred in the city of Cincinnati on July 5th. Detective Hot worked with the Cincinnati Police Department's Financial Squad Unit, and they began a joint investigation. On July 28th, the suspect struck again in Hamilton County First at the Fifth Third Bank on Henshall, then shortly after at the PNC Bank on Paxton. The Hamilton County Communication Center put out a different type of vehicle than the one that was used in our offense. So Detective Hot immediately got with the investigator with CPD and gave them the information about the vehicle that this suspect was probably driving. And it was driven by Mr. Russell Pender. Mr. Pender is a 60-year-old male from Georgia. And to make a long story short, this was the fifth bank robbery he committed within a short amount of time. So Detective Hot worked with CPD. They arrested the subject, and now he's got a multi-count indictment for armed robbery. So these are just two examples of the excellent work Detective Hot does, day in and day out. And you could see she's highly respected because we have not only members of her family here, but coworkers with the Pierce Township Police Department. So just like to give a round of applause for Detective Hot.
Thank you for all you did. Those are outstanding achievements. Chief Rocksmann, do you have anything else? Jason, you want to stick around for a minute? We're going to talk about the website real quick while we're on the topic, while we got you here. I figured it'd be a good opportunity.
That's all I have.
Okay, so it's come up, and we kind of added it on at the last minute about website improvements. And Officer Dorfman, you could do website improvement, correct?
Oh, yes. Received a lot of training from Pierce Township.
I'm kind of putting you on the spot. I didn't, yeah, sorry about that.
So Officer Jason Dorman, I've said, worked with the Pierce Township Police Department. I've received nine weeks of training just in one year, evolving technology and technology abilities. Outside of that, I've grown my own skills. I provide these resources to other organizations. And I spoke with Chief Rocksmann about using my skills and ability here while I'm working to improve the website, not only in accessibility for handicapped individuals, but individuals that use ease of use, quickly getting the things that they are needing, whether it be public records requests for us, vacation requests, extra patrol requests, zoning files. I think currently, the website menu could be better served to the public and allow them to easily access those materials.
Okay, so this was brought up to us prior to Tim getting thrown into the fire here as our administrator with Loretta. And kind of, I would say, quasi-agreed upon because you were going to, he was going to spend his time as a Pierce Township employee improving the website, or he could, right?
He could, yes.
So I kind of just wanted to have that discussion. I don't know how much official motion or anything that we need, but I think it definitely needs some work and some updating, and I think that would be a good start. And we have somebody in-house that could do it fairly inexpensively, you know? So I just thought I'd use the opportunity to bring that up because it was kind of a leftover from Loretta, and Tim had brought it up to me just today, right before the meeting, and I thought it was a good opportunity. So I don't know how you guys feel about it.
I think, you know, that's great. I mean, you've got the skill set to dig in, get under the hood. And it's been my frustration for a long time that some of the data is not as easy to get to for the public. I mean, a couple of times I've gone online, tried to find things, and it's like, you got to do 17 clicks to find just the calendar. So, you know, I think it's a great idea.
Are we talking about the entire township website or just the police section?
Yeah, the entire, the entire website, yes. So like the use of like Google Analytics, just in the mock-up that I did for the police department that could be presented to the administrator. We looked at just data of where did people go and placing those items high up in the webpage so that when they go to zoning, they'll see quickly those things that they're looking for, or maybe the police department, those things that they're looking for. And those things can easily be changed if the data that people are looking for changes.
So for instance, not just form, but also content, right?
Yes.
Some of the stuff on there is kind of outdated.
Yes.
Couple of years.
And they'll be able to maintain it very quickly. It's a very usable system.
I think it's a great idea. I mean, if you look at, I think Tim and I discussed some of the other township websites, for instance, Goshen, and some of the other ones, they're much more user-friendly, including mobile.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
Which I'm assuming is part of.
Over 50% of your user will be mobile.
Yeah, so you're planning to suggest that we make ours mobile-friendly?
Every site will be mobile-compatible and look the same.
I think that's great. I support the recommendation.
Sure.
And to be sure, you would, and we could do it either way, I guess, but you think as an employee of Pierce would probably be the, like, we don't need a?
Yeah, I would suggest that he not do it on duty because we want him out on the street.
Sure.
So he would be able to work on it during his off time.
Okay, so would he be a subcontractor or something?
As an employee.
As an employee? Okay, just additional hours, essentially. Okay. Yeah, I think it's definitely something that's needed. And the other, the other aspect of it is we've had exterior people before, and we could always use that if we needed to at some point down the road. But you really have to be in touch with the content, what's going on in township, because you could be the best marketer in the world and know everything about websites, and you're not going to do a good job if you don't have the tie-in with the township and the content aspect of it. And it's just, I worked on it when I first kind of left it, and it was, I thought it was up the snuff. But time passes and things get kind of jumped up, and, you know, more content gets added, and old content doesn't get taken off, and it just gets, you know, bogged down, so.
As a part of that, so I'll throw this in at some point, I think it would be nice if we had a nice professionally-done photograph of the elected officials all in nice dress, like Green Township has over in Hamilton County. I think it's not necessarily on the landing page, but somewhere there, and I think it will portray to the community a nice professional look if the other trustees and our fiscal officer are willing to do that.
I've just done that for the police department. I just took photos, professional photos of everyone, and uniformed out of you. So we can do it through the whole township.
And maybe highlight our department heads, as it, you know, Ms. Kohler, our fire chief, et cetera, in the respective sections of however you plan to segment that out. Great.
All right. Is there a way for you to, like, put some, you know, some sort of a program in there to make John look good?
Now we know you're kind of a.
Photoshop is amazing.
If you can do that.
I think you should have said absolutely not. Just kind of draw the line somewhere.
I mean, if you can do that, I mean, wow, I mean.
Slimmest down and the whole thing.
And I had spoke to Officer Dorman back when he did the mock-up, and this isn't the right term, but he kind of threw together the mock-up just as an example, and just the short amount of time he took, it was tremendous. Tremendous improvement from what we have. The pictures that he had of the officers he took were so much better than what we currently have. And I mean, he's willing to work with each of the departments to get the content on there that we want and need on there. And I know in the past several years back, we looked at bringing in some firms to redo, and some of those closed for like $30,000 or $50,000. Talent house and the ability, I think it's money well spent for all of us.
Okay, well, yeah, so everybody knows this wasn't knee-jerk, and I knew you guys had input before, and, you know, you guys are the ones doing it every day, so really I heavily weigh in your opinion, and it seems like it was all favorable, so. We don't need an official motion, so have at it.
Get started.
I just wanted to make sure everybody's on the same page.
Sure, and we'll keep you up to date. And as I put in the proposal from the police department side, it was to meet with each department, get the information they thought, present to them what they wanted, get the approval, and then bring it to the trustees after each department had seen.
Right, absolutely. Thank you very much.
Sounds great.
Anything else, Chief Rocksmann?
That's it.
All right. Chief Wright?
Let's have a few quick updates. The UTV that we purchased a couple months ago, you guys approved this good unit for the bed. It did arrive a couple weeks ago, and the company from California sent the wrong one. So it wasn't what was quoted or ordered. So they've picked that one up, and we're waiting on the correct one to show up. The engine replacement that was approved for the stuff and fire truck is complete. That engine is operational. We're just waiting to get the pump test done to make sure that everything's good to go before we put it in service, just for the safety of our folks. So that's scheduled for a little later this month. I think I touched last month a little bit about us thanking some of our neighbors for allowing us to use equipment just with our engine being down. And I think within a week of the meeting last month, we had the ability to return that favor. Franklin Township, who lent us an engine to use, had a motor going and ambulance, so we were able to return that favor and lend them an ambulance to use for a couple of weeks. So I think it just kind of goes to us all working together routinely. This past weekend, we did have a very unfortunate incident on the river where somebody had some type of medical emergency, we believe, drove off the roadway and into the Ohio River. Ultimately, the patient was found deceased in the vehicle several hours later. I know Trustee Campbell showed up down there. I think he got to see firsthand the amount of cooperation that occurs with us daily, not just amongst our department, but we had resources from Boone County there, Bellevue, Dayton, Anderson Township, and New Richmond assisting us. I think there's a lot more of that that goes on day in and day out than a lot of people realize. That is all I have. Thank you.
Just to echo on that, I was impressed. I really didn't have a good understanding of, you know, how one of these events would be handled, but the cooperation between all those organizations that Chief Wright mentioned was pretty impressive. And clearly, they were very respectful of our leadership. And so I was nothing but short of, I'm very impressed with that level of cooperation. It was very seamless.
I did. We had the county diet team also there to assist us.
Great.
I also want to mention that the Ohio Civil Rights Commission last month denied the filing by a fire employee, Kate Combs. She alleged gender discrimination. Civil rights investigator found that there was no evidence of any gender discrimination by Pierce Township Fire Department. So that civil rights action was dismissed.
Thank you, Tom. Anything else? All right. Service Director Kohler, after you took a beating at the, what the heck was that about? That was just totally unsolicited. You didn't deserve it? You didn't ask for it? Okay.
I give him stuff too, so. I'd said it before he did, so.
Yeah.
As far, the cemetery's been really busy, I mean, with a lot of sailing, sales of graves. The niches have really picked up, so of the niches that we put in a couple of years ago. For this year, we've sold revenue of $9,000 in those. So that investment's starting to come back to help, but unfortunately, when we price out a new one, the price is about doubled. So we're going to have to relook at the pricing on that. The other thing is, my foreman, who's worked here for nine years, he's leaving us. He's going on to Batega Township to be the director for them. It's a hard loss. I mean, he's pretty much been here since I've been here, and it's, we've had a really good working relationship, but I'm extremely stoked that he gets this opportunity because it's well-deserved for him. So, and which that's Cody Smith, his last day will be August 19th. So I want to wish him good luck on that, so. Batega Township's got a great employee, so.
I think he's done a lot of good work for the township here in Pierce, and I would like to echo that. He's been a great employee.
He's going to be a hard person to replace.
Sad to lose, but it's on to bigger and better things.
Absolutely, and I tell my guys all the time, if they, as long as they're leaving to improve themselves, I'm happy.
And that means you get your job.
Yes, yep. So. Other than that, no. All paving will start probably late this week, or, well, it's already late this week. So probably, most likely because of rain, beginning of the week, it'll probably be on like Monday or Tuesday next week.
I had one other question quickly while we're on it, just anecdotal, but, and whatever your schedule is. But I had a person on Chestnut Way over off of Redthorn asked me about street paving over there. You have any idea on when that is slated?
Redthorn is.
It's kind of back end of.
Yeah. But as far as their street, I can't answer that right now.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
But Redthorn itself is getting, is part of the paving program this year. So we're working our way through that neighborhood. It's just a matter of if it's next year, two years from now, I'm not sure yet. We just have to kind of judge the streets year by year, see which one is ready.
Well, I mentioned that you guys had a grading system and all that. I was just curious on where you're at with it. He was more than me, I guess. All right.
John, is that rating, is that on our website, or if it's not, do you want it on there?
I think it is.
It's on there?
Yeah.
It's on there?
Okay, okay.
It's a constant revolving. I'm constantly grading, and I'm a little bit behind right now, but we'll get it caught up come this fall.
Thanks.
All right, John. Funding, zoning, Eddie? Take off your tech hat and.
So briefly, we had a third purpose last month, eleven of which were new ones, so. So we had ten new cases, eight in which were then closed. From a grant perspective, we have some previous figures on that. We were awarded two grants. One was the state demolition grant for $9,000. To demolish a vacant well on North Ice. The second was for $170,000 for a sidewalk project, it was a CBGT project on State Road 25. So that CBGT project, I'll do about 60 days until we have next step. The county communicator needs to agree with HUD to create a grant, then next step will follow for us to dispatch. As far as the demolition project, Patriot Engineering is contracted with the county for that, and they'll essentially handle pretty much everything, asbestos testing, food demolition. You can expect all those projects to resume by May, the demolition. In your packets, we have provided a memo regarding the request of proposals related to sale, development, property, and the other. To recall, the police department, along with a couple of properties, were, most of them are RFP. The date, our PDA was on the live table. The statute recommendation, I'm sure, is on this, statute recommendation of this project to be considered metal made of date as part of our project. Focus, and we visited it at work in time.
All right, anything else?
I have a couple nuisance items that I can use this hour.
The two under nuisance center, old business? Okay, before you do, we have gotten compliments on Vineyard to the trustees, and I defer to you because you've done such great work on that over the last, since we met last, and a lot of that heavy lifting. So let's just jump into that.
Okay. So Vineyard, I have, I have fully, I got to show us a couple photos beforehand. I can throw that, but it sounds like you've heard that it's been accomplished. We had a contractor go out over the past couple of days, gave the property owner quite a bit of time. We set a deadline on August 5th. Situation's not very expedited at that point, so we had to go out, make sure the front side, the yard and everything. So that component is taken care of on site. And we'll continue to monitor that as well, ensure that it actually stays in a state of proper maintenance. Ultimately, I do have a motion, since it's getting under old business, a motion for the fence status initial repair. We sent them a letter regarding the fence, and we also received correspondence from the health department. And Dr. Campbell has provided a letter that would kind of help get them to move things along quite a bit. They responded to us indicating that the health department also believes their fence is in a state of disrepair and not holding the plant. So I have a motion requesting a resolution in 2022 of 340 declaring the nuisance for on a pool regarding a fence status initial repair. Does that seem to be considered now or later on the state?
Let's do it. So it's around a pool, and it's a nuisance and a hazard, right?
Yeah, so.
It's pretty cut and dry.
All pools required have a text fully surrounded, four feet high, they can't have significant gaps in them. This fence was deemed to have a gap that exceeded the allowable amount. That was corroborated by the health department. We reviewed their documentation as well. We reviewed their documentation as well in the patent. So what we'll do is if you determine that you want to proceed with this time, we will send a follow up letter, give the owner of the building a current back to the rebuttal, respond and fix it themselves. If they fail to do that, we'll proceed to work ourselves just literally with the dedication.
Gotcha. Is that numbered on here later in the agenda?
It is not. I can do, I can do.
So do I have a motion to declare the unfit fence around the pool at 3775 Vineyard as a nuisance?
So moved. Second, is that anything that we have to, you have a language specifically crafted to that effect? Okay, all right.
Basically, staff recommends resolution 2022 oh three three, a resolution approving the removal or repair of security or lighted or insecure structure located at 3775 Woods as it takes a fence run.
That sounds good. I second. Yes, thank you.
It is probably helpful that you read that specifically. I kind of get used to just running during the week, you know.
Yeah, all good. I think the defendants, well, I don't know if that's the correct terminology, the resident, the homeowner is the attorney. So I want to make sure all are ducks in a row when we craft this resolution so that we don't have any issues going forward. And Tom, is that, are we good with?
Eddie and I had a couple of conversations last week.
Super.
Good. All right. Anything else, Eddie, on that, on that note?
On Vineyard, I don't have anything else. Do you use legendary? Yeah, I can, I can do these legendary really quick too. Oh, I'm sorry.
That's right. That's not good. Roll call.
Mr. Freeman.
Yes.
Mr. Campbell.
Yes.
And Mr. Kelly.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thanks for the reminder.
Okay, Eddie.
Thank you.
Legendary.
Yep. The last thing I have, 962 East Legendary. They were approved for, they obtained their HOA approval from the design committee. Then they also obtained their zoning permit this, this week. And they will also commence demolition of half of the structure as well. That was current as of about two days ago. So the portion of the structure that appeared to be in significant dish repair appears to have been removed and they're moving forward with reconstructing in the same footprint.
I had a feeling that was where it was gonna go from the very beginning. It was like, oh, we're gonna save this structure and just clearly that that wasn't gonna happen. You drive by and it's just obvious. You can't, it's just too far gone. So if I'm looking at it from the road, the right of this, the east side of the structure has been demolished.
That is correct. The garage and then in the kitchen and so forth, they're gonna be saving conceivably the western portion that appears salvageable to an extent. And then rebuilding the remainder and footprint.
So what's the timeline on getting the right side of it out?
Well, it's totally in their hands at this point. I believe that they have permits to fully complete their remainder of the project. So it's gonna, I would, I would be very hopeful that it happens before, before winter sets in.
So we pulled the permits for that. And do we have, we have any county support on this or are they, is the county fine with just leaving, you know, a wallowing right side of the structure? And I mean, we have fencing around it, but nonetheless.
Thankfully, the wall that they were, they were forced to create a brace for, that has been taken down. So that, that'll no longer, that will no longer be an issue. I know if you remember, Chief Wright might be able to speak to this a little bit too. Where a portion of that wall began collapsing into the eastern yard. Thankfully, that, that portion has been removed, so.
Yeah, the eastern wall did collapse after one of our storms. We did work rather in depth with the building department. And that inspectors out there on a few occasions did issue some stop work orders with the county. And they were forced to put some bracing in and secure that so that didn't pose a hazard to the neighboring structure or anybody in the area. That, that part, I think they knew going in, once we got there, that it was gonna have to come down because the brick facade had just pulled away too much.
All right. I still don't see why it takes so long to get somebody on the demo the right side of the place. Is there anything we can do to speed that along? We've done all we can legally.
The, which part of that?
That getting part of the part that's insecure demo.
My understanding is that it's, it'll be imminent that all of the burnt out, all the charred component will be removed probably within the next couple of weeks. And the, the plans that they submitted and were approved by the designer view committee and by our department indicates that that entire area was going to be replaced with new kitchen, garage and that sort of thing. The, the entire portion that you can just see from the street.
I'm not grilling you, no pun intended. I just want to know what our, what we have, our, our footing, where that stands. Okay.
Eddie, right quick before we leave, have you, what's the feeling from Batavia Township on the Amelia properties? Have we got a feel for what, what they're thinking, if they're thinking anything differently than what you mentioned in terms of kind of pushing it back a little bit?
We, we have not received any correspondence regarding pushing, you know, pushing forward. They've allowed us to really be the lead, take the lead on this, on this project. So we felt that it was in everyone's best interest to kind of restrategize and reorient everything as where, where necessary. And relaunch it probably at a later date. But in the event that it comes up to, that they're taking issue with it, I mean, we would be happy to share that information. But we've been maintaining a pretty healthy dialogue regardless.
And any information on that restaurant? How's that going? Do we know?
Yeah, so the Stone House.
Yeah.
Yeah. So the Stone House was approved for a temporary event. They anticipate beginning that temporary event, oh, I believe August 14th. So pretty soon. And meanwhile, they'll be working, continuing to work on the rest of the structure, the actual. It was a dwelling, but now it'll be the restaurant, the Stone House itself. So. Okay. So you can expect to see probably some actual food coming out of the, out of the facility in pretty short order at this point.
Sorry.
Short order. Thank you, Eddie.
Sure. Thanks, Eddie. So I did kind of bounce over parks and green space. Do we have any kind of parks official update? Michelle's not here this evening.
Yeah, Michelle couldn't make it tonight. Did you?
You guys have anything you want to?
I think the only thing that we carried over was the conversation with Eddie. It was part of our focus. And we also discussed the George Carpenter memorials because the standards are in and down. Advice for the placement of those are gonna go. And so shortly, we should have all that in place so we can set up a time to actually do that, write the guide for a good working part.
Excellent. Okay.
I think Michelle was gonna give a little bit of a, just a brief update about the event at Spencer Shank yesterday, but she's not here. The ice cream social, for those of you who didn't know about it, was yesterday in Amelia, former village of Amelia, Spencer Shank Park. And it was really, really well attended. There were a lot of children there from that neighborhood and elsewhere, even outside the village, former village, I think. So folks came from Union Township and it was really well attended. The weather cooperated and it couldn't have been a nicer event for the first year. So next year, we look for bigger and better and appreciate everyone's support, Chief, and everyone else who supported that event.
Fun event. All right. Anything else? Parks and green space related? Administration, Tim, this is your first official meeting, isn't it?
It is. Well, you consider a part of the end of the last one, I guess, after that was approved.
You had half of them. This is your first full one.
Yeah. So Mr. Chairman, I had a few things tonight to go over. One, just a note in the back of your packet that Duke Energy is going to be doing some work on substation upgrades at the Beckjord property. There's a letter and some communication from Duke that's in the packet. They do have a letter that's going out to residents in the area. I think the date is August 15th that they put on there for the work they're doing. It's primarily set upgrades to the substation. There's a few poles that are having to be replaced as well. I think three new ones are gonna be running. But that information again is in the packet and we can put that information on our website as well for residents. Second, we had a request from a Mr. Drew Holman regarding possibly getting on the agenda for our September Board of Trustees meeting for a development plan. According to Eddie, this was, Mr. McCarthy, this was known as the Carl Hartman project, which is near our dog park. And they would like to approach the trustees on that again. So with your approval, we'll put that on the agenda for September.
Can you, I'm sorry, can you elaborate on that a little bit? What, what's the deal?
Unfortunately, being new, I don't know much about the projects and we had to bring Mr. McCarthy out. But I know it's something that they would, they want to revisit. I think at one time, the, the board of trustees had already had a discussion about this property.
So, so if you recall, that the real highlight of this project was that they wanted to obtain a portion of, basically do a potential property swap between the township and their property in order to increase the width of their driveway. And so they, they brought, they did a little presentation a number of months back. I don't know if that rings a bell, but it's just
It does to an extent, but I just don't understand what's changed.
If nothing's changed, I'm not inclined to discuss it again.
Yeah, it was a thoroughly discussed issue. In fact, since it, well, acquiring real estate and disposing of real estate, the trustees discussed it at length in executive session.
And I believe publicly as well. I mean, I remember at least two discussions in executive and they did a presentation here. And, you know, we weren't inclined to swap parkland for whatever it was they were trying to give us, swampland. We just weren't willing to make the trade. So unless they've got something new to offer. I mean, I guess we can take the time and listen, but.
Do we know if there's anything new to offer or if they're proposing something different than what was originally proposed?
Within the correspondence they sent, there was nothing that was noted that was new or different here.
Okay. So I mean, people are always welcome to, you know, come and discuss anything in an open meeting as far as I'm concerned. We have had it, but I would personally not be inclined to change an opinion based on no information change, no input change. The output would stay the same as where, from where I would stand, but it would be fine. Again, anybody's welcome to come and discuss anything with the board, so.
They want to come in under the public comment period?
Yeah, I think that would be more appropriate, given that there's not been, it doesn't sound like any real change in the proposal, which we've already addressed and discussed.
Yeah, nothing. So noted. Couple other items. I think I brought this up because that was a little unclear. Again, coming in new and taking over Ms. Rokee, we have the third phase of Preswick Place that is now a beginning. Some foundations are starting to be poured on those homes. And for the phase one, phase two, if you recall, we did put a tax increment financing district or TIF district on those. The question was on this third phase, which is the smaller of the three, I guess, so far they're being done, as to whether a TIF was intended or that we wanted to move forward with that or not. And we need to know tonight, which is why I put it on the agenda, because the county otters office has called me and indicated that if we want to capture that additional value, we would need to do it soon rather than later.
So there, I mean, there is a benefit to capturing that revenue to residents of the township, but I would kind of defer to Alan on this. What do you, what's your opinion?
Well, I mean, we, we discussed the possibility of having three to four TIF districts on, on that particular site. Each one of them continually got smaller and smaller, you know, in size and in, in revenue generation. So we got to, we kind of came to the conclusion that the two larger chunks made the most sense. It derived the most revenue for the township. But then third and fourth, you started to get it into so many, some, the TIF district became so small that it just really wasn't worth it. It wasn't, you know, worth taking that out of, out of the, out of circulation. It's better to just leave it into the regular, regular revenue stream and not do a TIF. I mean, the numbers, I don't know, you guys saw the, the email, but according to, I believe, are these, were these your numbers that were attached or were they from the county? They were numbers sort of back of the napkin that I did based on what our effective rate is for each one of the, the levies that we have currently. And then sort of a guesstimate of what the values of the property, the lots are, and then what the values of the homes would be. So we sort of multiplied that out. There are a couple of variances, the variables in there. One would be the waste levy that's going to be voted on this fall would be a question mark that would slightly affect the revenue on there.
So I mean, the, the chart that, that I'm referring to indicates that the total revenue that would be generated for township use for the 10-year period, not individual years, but for the total of the 10 years, came to $133,000. So we're talking about an annual revenue increase of $13,000. You know, I'd rather just leave that in to the, in the regular flow of funds. It becomes too finite. I think it's fair to say that that's not worth doing.
Yeah, I looked at, we talked about it, Tim, and I, I don't disagree.
Got it. Yep.
Thank you. I've got my marching orders on that. So appreciate it. And then last note.
We don't, we're not doing anything, so don't make a motion.
Right. Last item, Dr. Campbell has had a, a nice idea in terms of our greetings when someone calls the township and we are unable to answer after hours. And that is to have each of the trustees have a welcoming message. And so we've gotten a script for that. And Mr. McCarthy has been kind enough to grab those from you all. So if you have a couple of minutes on the way out tonight, if we could record that, we will get those on our phone system going forward.
A script?
It's a recommended script. The impetus behind this was, you know, I think to put your, you know, you folks elected us to do a job. We want to be right there in front of you at all times available. So we, we wanted that, our voices to be greeting our residents when someone calls here. So you're getting your elected officials and it won't just be me or Mr. Kelly or Mr. Freeman or Ms. Schwa. It will be a rotating type thing. So one of our, one of your elected officials' voices will be.
I think that was a Mr. Schwa.
Did I say Mr.? Oh, I'm sorry. Okay. But that was what was behind that. I just thought it would put a nice soft touch on things. Sorry, Debbie. That was a phone call.
All right. Debbie's notorious for hitting us.
Yeah, call on Ms.
Okay. So wait, we don't make a motion or anything. They hear me on that message. This is not gonna be good. Sorry for anybody who calls in.
This is your rockin' township trustee, Nick Kelly, wishing you a happy day, dude.
My late night radio DJ.
You gotta smile while you're talking.
All right. Tim, anything else?
That's all.
All right. All right. Other items?
Green.
Green Road Traffic Issues. Tim, you want to start us on what, what the status is here?
Well, sure. Again, as the newcomer in this, at the last meeting, I was there and it was discussed. And what came out of the trustees discussion was to go back to our engineer, Kleinger's, to see if there was a possibility that the fee that they had suggested would be charged for doing a traffic analysis and study on Green Road seemed to be a bit high. I think there was a little bit of concern. So staff was asked if we could go back and talk to Kleinger about possibly reducing that fee. We did hear back from them and they felt like that what they had presented was bare bones. So they were kind of doing us a favor with the initial price quote they had given us. So there really wasn't much movement on that. And I think that was generally where we had left it in terms of direction from staff. However, before the meeting, I had a discussion with our representative from Kleinger's and I believe he saw the light now. I, I think he's gonna give you another, another quote.
Okay. Well, what's the better quote? Somebody want to come up and talk about it or what? Would you like to come up and discuss it?
Yeah, I forget what the original estimate was, but I think talking with Alan, if we're gonna, we can pare it down just to a count and not do kind of a full speed study. That's something that's acceptable data wise to the township. I think we can get it down under $100,000. We talked about six or seven hundred is possible. Uh, that's something that, that's acceptable data wise to the township. I think we can get it down under a hundred thousand dollars. We talked about six or seven hundred is possible with the counts themselves.
And then I think we can get a good, we can get a good picture of, of how the road is reacting every day. And then we can make some decisions based on that. They also talked about giving us best practices, some ideas that are out there, which is exactly in line with what we've talked about before, um, so that we can pick from a list of potential, uh, uh, issue or, you know, responses to the problem. Also had a conversation with Chief Brockstrom and was it last night?
Yes.
I've, I've been with you so many times in the last couple of weeks. It's scary. Um, reminds me of my childhood. Um, having said that, um, you got it. You had had a suggestion as well about a way to try to get some, some attention on that, on that street and slow people down. And so perhaps we could have you talk with Sam and kind of compare notes there too.
Right. Yes.
So we can do that offline or?
Yeah, I think that's probably best. I mean, I don't think we need to get into, you know, all the, the gory details, but at least it can, you know, you can take some of the research you've done. And I know, I know you've done, you know, quite a bit on it. And then just download it to, to Sam. And I think that, I think that would be adequate. Thank you.
Thank you. And, and did you guys have any other questions with Sam?
No, appreciate your flexibility on that.
Thanks.
And you can get some liniment for that arm later. Nothing.
Um, I just.
You got it.
Um, I have one other like kind of caveat to that. I just kind of keep making sure everything is balanced within the township. And I'm kind of just like thinking as I'm talking, so I don't really have an exact plan, but I just have heard from a lot of folks on different streets within the township and some that are similar that people go way too fast on and they speed and they can't walk, you know, they're strollers on the road or they can't enjoy the road. And Denny's nodding his head cause he, he has one of those. And I just, um, I guess I'm trying to think about balancing that. If we're going to do a speed study on this road. And I, I know there's folks here that are passionate about that road. I get it. Um, but you know, our township resources are, uh, Randy, just give me one second, if you don't mind. Our, our township resources are, uh, generally, you know, um, finite and we, we need to make sure they're dis- dispersed in a fair way. And I'm not, I'm not taking any particular side at the moment. I'm just, i- is there a way that we could possibly open, uh, the line of communication with other people in the township? I'm not necessarily saying prior to doing the speed study, but maybe to see what other streets in the township are a concern to folks that are similar and, and just collecting more data to ensure that we're making appropriate moves here with the resources that we got.
Sam and I talked a little bit beforehand and we did talk about having the kind of flexibility on other roads. I mean, we can add more to that and look at other, at other, at other streets. What would be helpful is to be able to do a kind of a benchmark so that we know that green has X amount of traffic. And I'm going to use your street. Country Club may have a different.
Yeah, please don't include my street.
It's the only one I could think of because you don't want to use mine. Ten mile is not a good review. But you know, so if you have two roads that are fairly similar, but we've had some, some complaints about that way, we can have a sense of, you know, what that's.
For instance, I, I mean, I have had the same, um, complaints for East Legendary, uh, being that that's between Beeheimer and Ten Mile. And then people just, uh, according to the folks I've heard from fly through there. And so that is a, that's, that's an, so you could create a benchmark between a couple of different roads that you think are somewhat similar.
Right. Uh, well, yes, you can, but then there's another thing we could do. Um, some other townships have utilized, you know, the, the, the speed sled that you guys have. They have what they call stealth speed sleds. Um, and they're there, you, you can't tell that that's what it is. Um, because as people have pointed out quite rightly, you see it, you slow down. So these actually do the counts, give you the speed numbers. Um, and, and it would give us the data that we would need to know that Denny's absolutely correct, which I trust that you are because where you live, you're right. There's a lot of traffic through there. So we would be able to get even further detailed accounting of it. But I don't know how much those things cost. But over time, that might be a good thing for us to, to invest in so that we could roll those out neighborhood by neighborhood to just see what is the, 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 the nature of the problem. I do think you find particularly with a lot of subdivisions, you do see people cutting through, um, and, and, you know, you put in a road and you don't think about it until later on, when you discover, you know, it's a great straightaway for people to, you know, to, to drag race, you know, or, and I think that's, you know, green has that problem too. So yeah, I mean, I think we could do, we could do more and we could, we could expand this. I think if we get to a reasonable price on, on the traffic counts, we can add additional traffic counts on different roads as needed. And that way we get a really good picture of what our roads are functioning.
So we'd be basically depending on our residents to notify us of which areas they think are problem areas. As opposed to just.
Initially, I would say yes, because we have, you know, Denny's reported this to us several times. You know, we, we could, and some of, some of the roads like Merwin, Ten Mile are county roads anyway. Um, but we've gone several times to the county and the state to try to change speed limits on some of the roads. Cause we thought they were too high and we've been rejected. Now, if I come back with additional more detailed data that says you guys should do, you know, rethink this. Now I've got something I can present to ODOT and say, you're wrong. And we're getting people, you get it marked at forty-five, they're doing seven. And they're doing sixty with regular. So there's a lot of things. I, I think it's a network wide problem. I don't think it's just located on green road. I think it's no offense, guys, but I think it's all over the township because just the nature of roads.
Yeah, there's no question. I mean, down on my end of, of the township and you can hear it from up the hill where they gun it on the straightaway and they're clearly going fifty or sixty miles an hour. Then they slam on the brakes before that curb where the kid was killed a couple of years ago. Um, so it's a problem all throughout, but I guess that my question wasn't, are we proposing just a rotating periodic evaluation? Are we just on as needed when the residents of a certain community or neighborhood bring it up to our attention?
I'm saying let's get green under our belt and then we can, we can assess it from there.
Yeah, I think it's a good trial project. Look forward to it.
Like I said, do green and do a, a, a similar roads. We've got a benchmark to understand. You know, I, I think it's a network wide problem. Um, I think you've got a lot of townships that have developed over the years and, you know, they've had to face the very same thing.
I, uh, yeah, I'm not opposed to that. I think maybe simultaneously kind of moving on maybe a survey monkey. Uh, on a, uh, like pushing it on circle and a few things that are easy that aren't going to cost us anything to solicit feedback on other roads.
Sure.
I mean, I'm not trying to open a total Pandora's box here, but I mean, we do want to balance it. You may get, you know, you might get one reply on one road. You might get fifty replies on another road and that might, you know, you could kind of weigh those responses.
Do you want me to really nerd out for you?
Yeah.
When, when you build a network of roads, it's like an ecosystem. And you're building it as you go and it gets bigger and bigger and bigger. And you get results that you don't necessarily want. You, you can attest to this. You, you, you do one thing on this side of the ecosystem and it has an impact on that side of the ecosystem. And you grow to a certain point of maturity in that system that every once in a while you need to have a, you, you need to go in and take a look um, at how it's interacting with one another so that it's more efficient and more effective. And so this doesn't bother me at all, the idea of trying to reach out to the public and say, give us, give us more, you know, where do you, where else do you think we should do this? But I would like to get the system put in place so that we've got it. You know, scientifically, we're, we're collecting data and, and answering questions on how this ecosystem works together.
Absolutely.
Because, you know, what happens on green is, is not unique. It happens over on, uh, what was it? Gaskin? You guys went, took a look at the other day and it happens over on Hopper. I mean, we hear this a lot, but it's the nature of the beast. You build roads, you're going to have people exceeding the speed limit. But it's how do you make all of that come together and not make it worse? By what you did through decisions elsewhere. Does that seem like a, I, I tried not to do it like an engineering seminar, but I think I did, but at the end of the day, so I think you're right. The more data we can get about our roads and how they're functioning and how, and how we can improve them. I, I just think that's redounds to the benefit of all the community.
Yeah. And the, um, the price that you negotiated is clearly all inclusive and ongoing. So whatever.
I think it's, I, I think that it's, uh, I, I think that it's adjustable. Am I right?
Randy.
We really didn't have that kind of a conversation. It was very, very nice.
Yeah, I, I talked to the county of course, because this is county, there's a township road. T, T two thirty, T two twenty-three. So all the decisions on green road go back to the law director and the people here has none to do with the county. If you're nice to them, they do do traffic studies, you know, mainly to stop signs up for, for reduce speed limits. But if you're nice to them, not taking business away from them with your tiny stone, they probably do a study very inexpensive with the county. When I talked to them this week and stuff and last week. So, um, but again, this green road, you know, this has been brought to you four years ago. This is nothing new. The last couple of months, the residents have finally started getting together. And, you know, we've had this issue for four years. Okay. And I've been in front of the two of you for four years personally. And I'm just saying, you know, four years ago, we didn't have a pandemic. We didn't have our government, Washington DC figuring vaccine out. To tell me you can figure a vaccine out for a pandemic and happening on time. And we're still staying in front of you today, talking about green road. That says something's wrong. So, yeah, I get your ducks in a row, get the speed, whatever traffic says you need to do. And, you know, again, you just get going on the stat, the data, because it's getting worse by the day and week. You don't live there. We do. And some of these people living in the subdivision behind me, where you've, we've got a half mile drag stretch. And now we've got black marks from Mr. Freeman in front of our house, my mailbox. Okay. So you don't think they start taking out on me personally? They are. Go look at my, from my mailbox here. Yes, they have some left and right. Posse is in front of my mailbox. So they're taking out on me personally. Okay. I'm just telling you. And again, last week, I believe my wife called nine one one to excuse though, because on our street, we had three hoolums destroying mailboxes. So we called at midnight when she got home and reported that. We're supposed to get feedback from the police department township on what the outcome was. We haven't heard anything. The lady at the corner house, they actually rang her doorbell about midnight and stuff. So I'm not saying it's related to this, but you know, since my name's out there in some cases, they're taking out on our house and stuff. And so it's getting personal now and I'm getting a little tired of coming here for four years and this exact same issue. And I'm just saying, if you can't put your minds together, let me know. If I need to go to the county or hire, I've been willing to do it. I believe you start with a path of least resistance. You made this road go through, not me. Okay. We weren't, you weren't here, but this township connected that road. The county didn't do it. So fix it. Okay. Somewhere in the near future fixed. Don't get me lip service. I did it four years ago. Say, well, get a plane and place the previous police chief. It never happened. So four years later and now there's more people here saying the same thing with our speed humps, but the traffic volume and the speeding is too high. That is the fact. Yes. And it is nineteen feet wide for the discussion last week, last meeting is nineteen feet wide. Hopper Hill is twenty-five feet wide. Okay. So we have six foot smaller road. I measured it after the meeting and stuff. So you're right. I mean, Mr. Freeman, it was wide at some point, but still now wide as Hopper Hill and these other ones to support higher traffic volumes and higher speeds. So that's all I'm saying. Okay. And I'll let the aggressive residents speak, but there just needs to be a resident. We can't just keep it through this thing down the road, not do anything because it's not getting any better. It's just getting worse. The volume and the speed, again, if you control the speed, if people went twenty-five, we'd be fine with the volume. Okay. But people don't do twenty-five and I can promise you with my radar gun. And I will bring it to the next me because I'm going to videotape and show you half the people use their road between thirty-five and forty. And you can quote me saying that. Half the people use green road go between thirty-five and forty, period. That's what I've realized on my speed gun. Okay. They don't do twenty-five. And thirty-five to forty on a narrow road with people walking and golfers is too fast. Otherwise people would say thirty-five or forty and the road would be wider. It isn't for a reason. But I'm just saying it is a Pierce township issue. I've talked to the county, you know, if I need to go higher, I will. But the town, county came back to me and said, it is a township issue. This is a township road. They connected it. We have no jurisdiction. We can help you, Mr. Rice, if you want to in your community, but Pierce township needs to do their job.
Okay. That's what we're doing.
Yeah. Give us a break here. So with all due respect, you know, I understand your concern for helping.
Pete's not been here for four years, sir.
So we, we just talked to our professional engineer at Planet Place. So we, we are doing something. Your concerns are not called on that here. So please just be patient with us. We are concerned enough to where we have actually taken some action. So give us the time to collect this data and, and we'll, we'll get back to you. I mean, we, we will.
And there may very well be some very, I mean, we could take some actions and try to do some things sooner than, than that data comes in. But at the end of the day, we are trying to, to rectify this issue. We weren't here when it connected. And again, it gets back to what I just said about an ecosystem, right? So these roads, they connect. Whoever in those days decided it was a good idea to connect that, they affected that ecosystem. And so we, you know, we have to think about this and we have to do it methodically because we could try to solve your problem and make it worse. And we don't want that. We don't want to go put good money after bad and just keep doing this over and over again. Now I do, I'm, I'm gonna, I'm gonna scold you about one thing. You went to the county and they said they'd do something. I would never count on that ever happening. And, and they would get you that report in twenty twenty-nine. Because that's when they'd finally get around to it. That's been my experience with this county. They've, we need to get Merwin Ten Mile done. We're getting, it's getting to the point where they put it back to twenty twenty-five, twenty-six. You know, Merwin Ten Mile needs, needs work right now to the point now where we're actually going to be talking to the county about using our money to fix their road. Because it's not getting done. So that, I'm not scolding you. Yeah, I'm joking. I'm only, I'm, I'm really scolding the county and that's what pisses me off.
Let's give the county credit though. The county did do the speed study for that crosswalk there. That was the county that did that. So that was like a year ago. So I thought it was a township. It was the county that did do that. For disclosure, because I, I speak truth, you know, you know, I mean.
And I will give them, I will give them credit for that.
Fair enough. No.
But that's all.
No, and because I came to you four months ago, like a lot of, for data and that's why we, we want data, but we just don't want to take four more years. I mean, I'm just, you know, you would, you wouldn't think our government could figure a vaccine out that quickly, but they did. This is a road. We, we, and it is a township road.
Pandemic response was so beautiful, Randy, wasn't it? It was, it was such a, I mean, this is the, this is the shining moment that you're going to use as an example on how efficiency works is the pandemic.
At least something was done, whether you agree with it or not, something was done.
I, I agree. Here's the deal. Uh, we're, we, we are going to do this, but I would like to do it prudently.
I agree. No, I agree. I agree.
We have to take all the residents and make sure that we're, we're, we're spending our resources and we're doing it responsibly. And we're going to keep, I will keep, I think we all in agreement that we're going to keep putting one foot in front of the other. And we'll go ahead and move on this, this traffic study for sure. And it's just, I, I just think that we have a responsibility to everybody to, to ensure that we, we uphold our, our oath of office in a way that's, that's, you know, admirable and that we apply things in a, in a consistent way. And I don't want to set a, a precedent where we do something to placate to it. And I'm not saying that's what we're doing. I'm just, I just want to make sure that, that, uh, you know, that I'm doing my job.
Oh, I agree, Nick. Cause again, if they're speeding on our road, you can go to connect your roads and Pierce township. They're going, I mean, so.
Yeah. And that very well may be the finding. And I, and I'm sorry that, uh, things in government do move a little slower and they move slower than I would like.
Bad spot too, because we're right between Anderson Township, Union Township. We're in a bad spot because we have three things within a mile and a half. So it doesn't, we almost got to get all the jurisdictions to sit down together. Union Township, Anderson Township, Pierce Township. Hey, here's this issue. Here's your issue in ODOT. Here's this issue. Here's your issue on Hopper Hill. Get all three townships together and say, do something. You know, here's what we're seeing. Cause if it's going on green, it's still going on Davis and it's going on Hopper and it's going, guarantee it is. Because if people are not going to use one twenty-five, they're going to go quicker on all these other roads. I agree with you.
We've had a gentleman that came in and was upset about, about Hopper, um, what, a year ago or so. Um, you know, so we've, we've had to deal with that. I mean, Denny, you've brought, you've brought issues to our attention as well. So again, it's like, it, it to what Nick is saying, I'm just slightly same, same end result, but I want to get good data from across the township so that we resolve this issue, but we're also resolving some of the other issues that, that we see um, as the township, quite frankly matures.
Yep, I agree.
And I would also like to be sure. I appreciate your passion. And I stood, I stood in front of the board at one time pissed off about some of this.
I thought it was just us on green. I realized the people in the subdivision, some of them feel the exact same way, you know, and they're in a shorter stress than we are. So I mean, that's.
A lot of times things don't happen if you don't get fired up about it.
And I'm only, and I'm only teasing you about the.
No, you're not. Well, my wife came, my wife took off work last time to come, but that didn't do it. So she said, you better be a little more forceful today because I can't take off work again. So.
We're still, we're, we're with you. We're trying to get this thing moved as quickly as we can.
Okay.
But unfortunately, sometimes the wheels of government move slowly.
Yep.
We'd all love to get it to move faster. I mean, we could just have a police cruiser stationed at the end of the road twenty-four, seven, but I don't think we've.
It doesn't do any good. Now you have to be outside. You really just have to start, you know, you saw the thing on the news on Monday, Newtown, hundred and eighteen on Main Street in Newtown, the first, the guy, the UDF says they, they patrol so quickly here and stuff with somebody like one eighteen, but they caught him. Might have been Nick. No, I don't think, but I mean, it was on, it was on the, the news on Monday, you know, twenty-five, somebody's one hundred and eighteen. We don't have quite that high out there, but.
No, not yet, but don't try and encourage it. Thank you.
So, uh, do we need a motion to move forward with the study?
Um, I think we need to get a price to Tim. Um, can we go ahead and just, should we just do a motion? Yeah. Do a motion for, for Tim to, to move, to move forward. You just, we'll just have him just move forward or do we need a not to exceed number attached to it? Not to exceed his authority. He's got, he's got an authority. What, what is the township administrator's authority? He's got, he's got an authority, what, what is the township administrator's authority to spend? Twenty-five hundred, I mean.
Well, I'm, I'm trying to keep this in line with, like we discussed, being prudent. And if we do other speed studies in the township, just making sure that they're reasonably cost, and you know what I mean? So what was your, you had a cost?
It's like nineteen.
It was nineteen hundred.
Yeah, plus three hundred dollars each. But you could come down to six hundred, you said?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Not to exceed eight hundred?
That'll work.
I'll make, uh, yeah. And then you try to do it, you try to take the data from different points in time during that, during that day. So what is the AM volume? What is the, the PM volume? So that way, that way we get three or four data points throughout the day. We, it would be a weekday, yeah. So you, you would do a weekday, right? Yeah, that's how you're going to save the money, you're going to do it Sundays? You get the last laugh on me, right?
So do I have a, a motion to do a traffic?
To direct.
Authorize staff to engage with contractors, do a traffic study on Green Road, and the amount not to exceed eight hundred dollars?
So moved.
Eight hundred dollars?
And I think one thing, it should be during this whole day, not on a holiday session, not on a holiday.
Yeah, we could, we can pick the day.
Nick, you made the motion then?
Yeah. We got a motion in a second?
Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
Mr. Campalis?
Yes.
And Miss Kelly?
Yes. Was that a, was it a miss, Kelly?
Okay, thanks, guys, appreciate it, appreciate the input. All right, new business, Debbie.
Oh, sure. Yes.
Yeah, so, thank you.
Well, Eddie did a lot of that heavy lifting, so he.
I saw him out there cutting the grass, it was great. That's what I heard.
Speaking of ecosystems, we have one over there.
I told, I told my daughters that, and they want to run over and get them out of the pool, I'm like, no, no.
Take care, guys, thanks. Yes, sir.
Hello, state members? My name is George Bates, I'm at thirty-seven seventy-four Vineyard Woods Drive. Now, I don't want to prolong the agony here, okay? But Green Road is merely a launching pad for Vineyard Woods Drive. I have seen atrocities on that road, I've been there for twenty-eight years. I have seen things on that road that absolutely abhor me. And what can be done about that? As I say, I'm not going to try to extrapolate, I'm going to get to keep this thing moving. But I want to bring it to your attention. There is a hill there that you cannot see until you start down it. God spare a child on a bicycle that ever be on that road, it's impossible. So I have registered complaints in the past. And maybe not falling on deaf ears, but something has to be done there. That is a thorough affair. Now, common sense would dictate during rush hour, these people want to get home to their families and their dinner. And some of them abide by the law, some of them are just complete maniacs. I have seen with my own eyes, Green Road, I saw another man pass another one. I don't know how he stayed out of the ditch, they passed another one, just going, and then, and then they hit that corner. And what I would describe as a four-wheel drift, some of them. And I think something should seriously be done, that, that whole thoroughfare is bad news.
Have you, you said you've lived there for twenty years, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you, if I did. You said you, you said you've lived on that, on that road for twenty years.
Twenty-eight.
Twenty-eight years. Are you finding that it, it's, it's increased over that, I mean, because probably part of that time.
No, it has not increased, and if anything, it decreased slightly. Uh, I guess due to the COVID and all those businesses.
Right, but, but it's, yeah, okay.
At any rate, I, I would not let a child on that street, this hill. Until you start down, you can't see anything on the other side. And I have seen people come there, I know at over fifty miles an hour.
Yeah.
I accosted one of them, and he told me, old man, keep your mouth shut, I'm like, come out and whip your rear end.
Man, you've got some rough customers in your neighborhood.
Unfortunately, I was carrying, and he noticed, and he took off. But I hadn't ever threatened him or anything, but
Right.
It, it's just, I don't know, I, I worry about the children mostly.
Yeah.
I, I, I can't imagine the speed like this. Well, as I said, and I'm, say no more, Green Road is just a launching pad for Vineyard Woods Drive. And I, thirty-seven seventy-four, I was across the street from that atrocity over there. And I knew both of those gentlemen quite, quite well for over twenty years. And one is the nicest person you'd ever want to meet in your life, and another one is a symbol of arrogance. I'll say no more, thank for your ears.
Thank you, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Debbie.
I request a motion for approval of the payment of the payroll for the month of July in the amount of four hundred thirty-two thousand, one sixty-six fifty-eight.
So moved. So moved, I'm sorry.
Second.
Mr. Campalis?
Yes.
Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
Mr. Kelly?
Yes.
I request a motion for approval of payment of the bills for the month of July in the amount of nine hundred eighty-seven thousand, two thirty-four sixteen nine.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
Mr. Campalis?
Yes.
And Mr. Kelly?
Yes.
I request a motion to renew the time block for IT services from computer management, service management, in the amount of three thousand dollars.
So moved, second.
Roll call.
Mr. Campalis?
Yes.
Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
And Mr. Kelly?
Yes.
I request a motion for resolution twenty-two oh twenty-nine, appointing Region fourteen Representative Greta Hutcheller Mayor and alternate Representative Karen Shear to the One Ohio Recovery Foundation Incorporated Board for an initial term made in, ending May fifteen, twenty twenty-four.
So moved.
Second. Roll call.
Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
Mr. Campalis?
Yes.
And Mr. Kelly?
Yes.
And I do have one more that's not on there.
Of course.
It wouldn't be a meeting without it.
We've come to expect it.
It's the work time invoice, which is the Affordable Care Act. And we renew do this every year, in the amount of six thousand twenty-seven dollars and forty-five cents.
So moved.
What was that, Debbie? I didn't quite catch.
It's the work time.
The what time?
Works time.
Works.
W O R X.
Okay, okay.
It's the Affordable Care Act.
Okay, okay, I didn't get the works part, okay, second.
Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
Mr. Campalis?
Yes.
And Mr. Kelly?
Yes.
Thank you. All I got.
All right, trustee Freeman, you got one on the list.
Aren't I special? I get my own motion. Uh, trustee Freeman requests a motion to approve the expenditure of an amount not to exceed three thousand dollars for the installation of a water tap and hydrant at Pierce Preserve on State Route seven forty-nine. That's not exactly right, that's on Pond Rock. It's not on seven forty-nine at Ten Mile, unless you're putting it in in front of my house. So we just need to change that to Pond Rock. What this is, is if you recall, several months ago, we directed the administration to get a price on putting in a water tap for, for the Pierce Preserve and Trust. We did that part, but unfortunately, we didn't come back and actually authorize the expenditure. So it, it came to our attention that we have not put the tap in place. And so this just catches, catches up to the original motion we made six months ago, something like that.
I will say that we don't do it now, and ever January, as of January first, the tax fee will.
Yeah.
Oh, gosh, well, then I'll second, let's move on. So you made the motion, or you requested the motion?
I'm requesting the motion.
Oh, you're requesting, okay, then I'll make the motion, excuse me.
And I'll second it.
Okay.
He made the motion, I, because I, I called for it. What's wrong?
Well, I thought this was, was, okay, and we'll be getting a monthly water bill.
Correct.
From them.
Right.
We're paying for the tap in, and then we are also paying the month, or the quarter, water bill.
Water bill, yeah.
I think it's on the order of twenty-one or twenty-two dollars every two, two months, something like that.
Okay.
The water bill?
Yeah.
So if somebody's going to, once his kids get in there and decide, oh, we're going to leave the water on.
To put a lock on it.
You could go shake your fist at them, too.
Yeah.
I could do that.
Definitely.
Well, the question that I have is, we've got water fountains and water faucets in the park over there. And they're accessible as well, am I right? So somebody could do it there, they could do it over at Shank Park, they could do it anywhere, so.
This one's way up there.
Yeah, well, in the dark of night, anybody could do anything, right? Anywhere. We've had kids spray paint, well, actually, they lit one on fire over at Grow Park.
Sounds like we have a benchmark, you know, fairly quickly, if there was a nightly issue, like, you know, some kid pulling a tanker truck in and filling it up with water. You know what I mean? What is the end game there? But, but if so, you would notice that uptick, and then you could, like, you know, you could put a lock on it if you had to.
It could be locked, right, initially.
It will have, I mean, well, no, the, they do a lot of work up there. And they're pulling water from the neighbor's house, and trying to notice who cleans and everything else, get it over there, and but it, it was really, it's six dollars for every thousand gallons after that initial. It's something about, it's something about five monthly, it's six dollars for every thousand gallons, so.
Thanks, John. Mr. Campalis?
Yes.
Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, is that all, Debbie?
That's it.
Tim?
A few here, first, I request a motion for resolution twenty-two oh three oh, accepting the terms of the distributor settlement agreement and Jensen's settlement participation agreement pursuant to the One Ohio Memorandum of Understanding, and establishing a separate One Ohio Special Fund under revised code section fifty-seven oh five dot zero nine F to receive such One Ohio funds.
So do you get, you want to give the background on that?
Sure, so, and you have some information in your packet as well. Uh, this is part of the settlement that the states across the US made with manufacturers and distributors of the opioids, that became such a crisis in our country. And each one of the state attorney generals, working together with the others, came up with this national settlement. And this is the first couple, I think there's more coming, Dr. Campalis as well, or Mr. Keating as well. But this is the first of those settlements. As part of the settlement in Ohio, it was very specific as to how that money would be spent. I included that in the packet as well. I did meet with both Chief Wright and Chief Rockstrom to discuss the roughly sixty-eight hundred dollars a year that would come in over the next eighteen years or so, and how that would, how they could foresee that spent within our township, so that we could meet the requirements of the One Ohio Agreement. And I've noted in the memo that they had a few ideas there, they can certainly talk about those in more detail. But I think those are certainly within keeping of the regulations. Geez, I don't know if you want to mention the things that you had in mind there.
Well, as you all know, we detail an officer from Pierce Township to the Claremont County Narcotics Unit. And we could use part of those funds to help supplement his salary. And then I think Chief Wright had some other ideas.
Yeah, I think one of the big items that was available is training for first responders and proper identification and handling of of opioids such as fentanyl, called fentanyl, I mean, I think that one's significant for me, like that. Though the runs for overdoses aren't nearly today what they were five years ago. We don't want to make one on one of our police officers that's made a stop of somebody and handled something or got complacent. And, and now we have a police officer that's not breathing. And so I think that was very significant for, for our police staff and fire staff. And I think, you know, maybe some, some additional work with our schools to work, you know, if we can one of the ways, I think, obviously, I don't have any background in opioids and addiction treatment. But we've got to start somewhere, and if we can get the message through some of our younger kids, we have three elementary schools. So I mean, that's a good place to start, to at least help break the cycle and keep them from heading down a bad path. So I think that's a good, the thing, we've been involved with, we have a very active role with our three school campuses. And I know New Richmond last year did a safety day for staff, and they brought in a group that talked about street drugs and kind of how kids are abusing them, hiding them, things like that, and to support, support some of those programs. I think would be great for our residents and community, and, and being mindful of some of the other programs that are going to go on in the county and not duplicating resources and duplicating efforts and, and making sure that we're trying to make a difference with money.
It sounds like we've got plenty of places to spend that money, but perhaps as a part of that, if we have any leftover funds, we could look at spending some of that on part of pulmonary resuscitation education for the community, so staff and community.
Yes.
There's any money left over.
And I know Chief Wright is going to pursue with the administrator, you know, looking at the need to do some CPR training with our residents here in the township. So we're going to put out some general interest information to see how many people would be interested in taking part in that program.
All right, well, I will make the motion to accept the terms of resolution twenty-two oh zero three zero.
Seconded.
Roll call.
Mr. Kelly?
Yes.
Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
And Mr. Campalis?
She's got, she's got to really think about it now. Have you noticed that? We're in her head.
Got the chair making motions.
I know, it's just like all over the place.
That's our job. Tim?
Uh, yes, I request a, a motion that would affirm staff's submittal of an application to Ohio Public Works Commission Green Space Conservation Program for the proposed Jenny Lynn Road Green Space Preservation Project. Uh, this is something that I believe that the trustees have discussed individually with staff in the past. This would be for application of a piece of property on Jenny Lynn Road that is environmentally sensitive. One of our trustees happens to sit on a board that is, makes those allocation decisions. Felt like that this would be an ideal project for that particular area, and it would preserve some very important green space in that area. It does require a twenty-five percent match, local match. Um, we have done an appraisal on the property at this point. Um, and the application has been moved forward, but we would want to make sure that the trustees affirm that application.
Very good, motion.
So moved, second.
Roll call.
Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
Mr. Campalis?
Yes.
And Mr. Kelly?
Yes.
Tim?
I'd also like to request a motion for resolution twenty-two oh three two, clearing certain township property surplus and authorizing staff to place such items at public auction and disposal is set out in O R C five oh five dash one zero. Um, attached in your packet is actually a list and pictures of the items to surplus. This is one of those projects I inherited when I first came on board, that I think that the department sure was working on. So I just wanted to push it through, and we, our intent would be to put that on GovDeals Auctions. And we, our intent would be to put that on GovDeals Auctions site, which we've used in the past. And it's surprising how things that you would not think would be purchased actually get purchased when you put it on the site, so. I have very confidence that all those items will likely be purchased through the website, but if not. ORC allows us to then just dispose of it in a dumpster.
So moved. Seconded.
Roll call?
Mr. Kimballis?
Yeah.
Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
And Mr. Kelly.
Yes. I thought we set off the fire alarm. All right, Tim?
And another motion, I would like to request a motion to accept the bid from Logan Creek Construction Incorporated. For upgrades to facilities and grounds at Locust Corner Park and Grow Park. In the base amount of six hundred and forty-four thousand, six hundred and thirty-nine dollars and no cents. And alternates one through four, and the additional amount of one hundred and seventy-nine thousand, six hundred and forty dollars. As you all are aware, that's a project that the township's been working on for a while. Kleinger's, who's here tonight, and Mr. Morton, can talk a little bit more about the bids or the bid that we received on it. Any other questions you about, have about the park, but from staff's perspective and also from Kleinger's, we would recommend. Approval of this bid because it's within three percent of what the engineer's initial estimate was.
Okay, so we're on the, the, the park upgrades?
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, we've discussed this quite a bit.
Yeah. We need to date that. Sam, do you want to come up and just talk, just talk a little bit about what? Kind of the process you went through. I mean, maybe, maybe you guys want to talk about it from the park perspective, park committee perspective as well. But also let us know a little bit more detail about what steps one through or additions one through four are.
Yeah, I'll give a little background on the bid process. We did put it out for public bid, which was open on the twenty-ninth of July. We had three plant holders on the project, Logan Creek, who's the loan, the loan contract to submit a bid. And then Cruz and Ford were both reputable contractors. It's for some reason chose to submit a bid. Like Tim said, the, all the, the one submitted bid came back within, within three percent of the total. Total estimates. And I was running through the alternates, alternate one. We had an option of one point five inches of paving and restriping of the existing basketball court out here. To restore to a parking area. That, that amount itself was thirty-seven thousand, which was, all of these alternates were very close to what we had originally estimated. In the bid process. Alternate two, post-install tennis color coat with tennis hand pickleball striping on the tennis courts out there at an amount of eight-seven hundred. Alternate three was for Grow Park and that was to install. I think it was, I had a misprint here. I think it was synthetic turf or synthetic surface in lieu of the wood fiber mulch to the playground surface. As an upgrade to that, and that was seventy-eight thousand, nine hundred and forty dollars. And then alternate four was installing lighting and security cameras out of Grow Parks instead, I believe we discussed there's some security concerns out there that we wanted to try and address. And that number was fifty-five thousand dollars for that, that alternate.
I do want to linger on the security camera thing a little bit. I'm not necessarily opposed to it, but I just can't recall the last time I was in a park and saw. I mean, maybe they're there.
They're there, you just didn't see it.
Are they? And there's, is there an ongoing wifi? And I mean, how are you going to get data from those?
Yeah, I'd have to double check in the bid on what we had as initially specified. I know we kind of put that in later on in the process and that's something I think we'll have to discuss with the contractor, but yeah, it'll be, it'll be on a, on a continuous.
Feed or whether or not, yeah.
John, had you, did you discuss that wifi? Is that you that mentioned something about that at one of our meetings or am I mistaken? No, okay.
Yeah, that's right. And then somebody's gonna have to monitor, and it's gonna have to happen here, to go back to a certain. Time where you're gonna have to scan a big amount of time. Okay, last time you guys were there, everything was fine, and three days later it wasn't, so you gotta look for three days footage.
Right now, we have cameras up, they're. Kind of process, takes a lot of factors. But once a month, we switch it out. If there was any incidents, we look at, if there wasn't any incidents, which is why the hard things stick back in. So, you know, we can give you that process, but I could say the amount of batteries are useless.
These cameras.
Fifty-five thousand dollars?
These cameras are going to be a lot more detailed than the, than the cameras that we get on the trail, the pictures you're gonna get on a trail cam. So if somebody does something, you're gonna be able to see more of what, they're also attached to lights, so you got a better picture. All the way around than, than we'll be up now, so. The question is, I mean, it's not the fifty-five thousand dollars for the batteries. It's how much time are John's guys out there taking graffiti off of a three-hundred-thousand-dollar installation that we just put in?
I don't, I'm not necessarily disagreeing with it, but you get somebody too, and then you have them with a foot on and then what? I mean, sure, I, I'm just playing devil's advocate a little bit. I'm not necessarily opposed to it.
Sometimes when people know that there's a camera. They don't do it. They shouldn't do it anyway. They should have more common sense than to actually destroy something that everybody else paid for. But having said that, stupid people exist. This is our only defense unless we want to park a car. Once again, park another one of your cars right outside the, the, the facility and just sit and watch it all night long.
I think the technology has changed such that there might even be some solar cameras, you know, whereby the batteries would not have to be changed as often. It's my understanding of that technology where it is now, and I think it operates on the cellular signal. And I think it cannot only be. Something that is continuously recording, but also motion or event triggered so that you're only recording certain pieces of data.
The, the cameras that we have, they're, they're not solar, but. We did try to sit on their plan, their data plan. Was unfortunately. So I couldn't. Because otherwise it would have said, anytime the camera was stripped off, it would send a message to my phone.
Think about what you might have seen.
Greg's getting a kick out of that thought, that you're just waking up in the middle of the night like he does.
There you go.
I, I support the concept of monitoring that, that very costly, those very costly investments in the township. I, I would be a supporter of that and maybe looking into whether or not solar technology might reduce the usage of batteries. As a part of that, didn't we talk about the decorative or non-decorative? Like fixtures concept that, if you could refresh my memory on that?
I, I, I don't know. I'm. I know someone else in our office was more, more intimately involved with the details of that portion of the bid, so I'd have to go back and get more detail on that. And that's something we can discuss with the contractor as far as if we want to include some sort of decorative lighting above beyond that.
I guess what I was asking is, is that part of that, that number?
Lighting, yeah, lighting is a part of that. It was lighting and security camera, both, yes.
Upgraded lighting. Okay, we don't know. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so we can approve this. I mean, if we found a cheaper option, we can, of course, pursue that. I just wanted to ask about it. I remember it got brought up the last time. Of course, I'm not anti-taking care of the park, but.
Mr. Chairman, I, I did have one thing on alternate two, and John can chime in on this if you'd like. When we went out a couple of weeks ago to take a look at the park and the upgrades. One of the things we noticed on the tennis court slash pickleball courts is that there's been significant cracks in the pavement. And I think that John expressed some concern at that time about. Expending money to resurface that with the underlying base of the asphalt being in poor shape. So the only caveat I would say in accepting this bid is to at least give us more opportunity to work with engineers, to John and John first, to see if. We might need to delay that portion to actually fix the pavement. And it may be an additional cost, but certainly we would bring that to you at that time, but you don't want to throw good money after bad, and I think we might be doing that.
And I think this alternate was put in there even during the bid process, if I remember right, early in the process, just because of the question about pickleball striping and things like that. So yeah, it's something that, I agree, if we're, if we're concerned about just the overall dirt going in and force themselves, it's probably wise to.
There is pickleball courts already on that, that straight out. It's just, there's not.
Right. Well, there's four, there's four courts there. Just two, two over in legendary?
I don't know about.
I thought there were four in legendary, so that, within a short walk, you're at six different pickleball courts, but. But a legendary person can come by.
Yes.
So we can, we can bring you after we met with Sam and his, his team and John. We can certainly come back and give you the analysis and what the potential, you know, costs would be, and then you can make a decision as a board as to. Whether we want to do something more in depth. So that's all we're asking at this point is, I think that this is fair, that there be some sort of recoding of it, but. The question is, is there more that has to be done? And we'll, we'll let you know about that as staff.
All right, well, I'd like to make the motion and accept the bid.
There you go again. Making motions from the chair. Yes, I'll second that.
All right. Yes.
Yes.
And Mr. Kimballis.
Yes.
Chief Rocksmann?
I request a motion to accept the bid.
Thanks.
From Mills Fence Company for six thousand, six hundred and forty-six dollars. To furnish and install a chain link cage in the storage building for supplemental storage of equipment. And files in the new storage building out back.
He says that it's for storage, but it's really when I get bad, he's gonna put me in there.
So moved. That's why it's chain link. A motion and a second.
Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
Mr. Kimballis?
Yes.
And Mr. Kelly.
Yes. All right, sir, start the caller. Thirteen.
Sorry, I was on the line and we're, we have a road closure issue right now from wires down.
We covered yours, Chief Wright.
Yes.
Yep. So John's up, right?
Yeah, John's, John's on.
I request a motion to accept the lowest and best bid from Compass Materials for the twenty-two, twenty-three. Winter season to purchase up to a thousand ton of road salt for a cost of. Sitting down, right? Ninety-two thousand, four hundred and seventy dollars, the rate of ninety-two dollars and forty-seven cents. For dump delivery. I kind of want. We'll go into the talking thing, then we'll talk about it or whatever.
It is what it is. That's, do you have options for multi-bids?
Yeah, there was multiple bids.
You got, okay.
That's the cheapest, but.
Yeah.
Is what I want to ask is. We could cut back to help offset some of the cost, but with that, it's going to be. You're not gonna get the same service that you typically get. I mean, this, this bid is almost double what we paid last year. So. You guys tell me what, you know, I wanna be on the same page with everything.
Are we in any kind of a group purchasing situation? Okay, so this is the group purchasing place now? Or are we in the county or?
It's called Swaffergy. It's townships all over Southern Ohio.
Okay.
That are all put into. And whatever each company bids on it, and it doesn't mean that. Everybody that's in it got the bid from Compass. You know, whichever. They bid on each individual entity. And then those are. Done, and then whichever one submitted that bid for that entity is cheapest, that's the one that they send us.
Okay. And this is up to purchase up to a thousand tons?
Yes, doesn't mean if it's a light winner, we won't buy, you know, if we don't need to buy any, we won't buy any, but if we. You know, if we have a event like we did last year with this ice that, and we burned it up, I mean, it's.
So up to a thousand, we'll, we'll have a guaranteed availability up, up to a thousand. Okay, so if we don't, if we go, I don't know, use half that, then it'll be fifty some thousand.
Yeah, we don't have to take what we.
That, okay, that's what I was going, okay.
Okay, all right, well, I'm not inclined to cut corners there personally.
Okay. That's, I just.
Yeah, I, I think it's, what can we do? Yeah, I, I think it's, what can we do? Um, I make a motion to approve.
Second. Go call.
Mr. Kimballis?
Yes.
Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
And.
Yes, John.
I request a motion to approve the quote from the Brewer Company for a Greco line laser thirty-four hundred, single gun for line striping in the amount of five thousand, eight hundred dollars. Um, this tool will allow us to re-strike the parking lots as needed. Um, the school zones, um, keep those fresh, you know, vis- and highly visible. It's not something that we can go out and line stripe a whole road with. But it's, you know, if we do any kind of patchwork and we have to, um, mill out part of the, the line, we can, we can do small, s- small portions of the line, but we can't do road and then on roads.
But like typical township sections.
Yes.
Sounds good to me. I'd love to see some lines in the parking. I was gonna park next to Tim, but it's crooked. He's taken up a couple of spots.
I make a motion to approve.
I'll second. Go call.
Um, Mr. Kimballis?
Yes.
Mr. Freeman?
Uh, yes.
And Mr. Kelly?
Yes. All right, Administrator Williams, have a overview of the, uh, goal setting process?
Stand up there for a couple of hours.
That's right.
We'll watch what we get. So, um, you know, we've had individual discussions, uh, regarding a possible goal-setting session for the board, um, and how we could get our collective ideas together and try to get some more specifics. I can't say the word, never could, uh, pronounce it. But, um, I want to talk just a little bit about, uh, the process and how it would work and then get an affirmation now that you're together collectively, that this is something we're gonna move forward with. Um, and for the public's purpose as well, and what we would be doing. Um, so it would really start with, uh, and this is an optional first part of it. You could do a resident survey. I've done it several ways over the years. Now, one, doing mailouts, um, but also you can get, um, somebody like NKU, um, that has, uh, the capability of doing those types of phone surveys. And they can really drill down to get a cross-section in the public. It's not, not that expensive either, which is nice for, there's a couple of options for that. But if time is of the essence now, that could be something that's put off till a later date and we could go back and revisit it. Um, after that, uh, the next thing, as I mentioned to you, is that, uh, the trustees would come together in a special call meeting, um, to, uh, tour our facilities and meet with our department directors. And we already talked about this on Monday at our staff meeting. Um, I think they're all excited about the opportunity to take you collectively through each one of these facilities. Um, I think there's obviously some synergy to that, because you're hearing the same thing at the same time. Um, and you can learn a little bit about the needs of those departments going forward, whether it's land, building, equipment, whatever it may be. Um, you can hear those, and that would likely be, um, like on a weekend morning, um, that we would come together or weekend afternoon. Um, it's about a, probably four hours, I would guess, uh, because we'll be looking not only at facilities, but, um, probably drive through our parks as well and, um, hit a couple of hot areas that are your interest. And particularly, um, the Amelia Village, or, uh, Amelia Village area, um, where we had the RFP that Eddie was working on, as well as some other things. Um, after, uh, we do that, um, what I'll hu- hand out to you is a scoring sheet. Um, it'll have things that, um, have been discussed that day as part of the tour, plus, uh, things that you've been telling me about, uh, that the former administrator told me about. I'll try to pull as many of those together as I can, so it may be a fairly exhaustive list. Uh, but what you'll do at that point is score those based on your individual priorities. So if it's a high priority, you would get a twenty. If it's a low priority, you'd get a one or a zero, and somewhere in between for each one of the priorities. Uh, we would then bring all three of those together collectively from the three trustees. Um, and then we would have an initial scoring of priorities. Um, then the next step would be to have, um, a meeting where, uh, we would present a staff, um, what your initial scores were and what those priorities were from one to fifty or whatever the number may be. Um, and you would take a look at those and have discussion and sort of go back and forth on whether collectively what was number one really should still be number one, or if it should drop down to number five, and if number eight should come up to and rise to number two. Um, but after those discussions and, uh, with, among the trustees going back and forth, uh, we would come up with a preliminary goal, um, set of goals, um, for the, the township and, uh, reflecting the, the trustees', um, desires in the next few years. Um, so going on from there, Eddie, we'd go to. Uh, we'd go to a meeting number two where we can finalize those priorities. Um, after that's done, we would set, uh, our budgetary allocations, um, that we would give to our fiscal officer, so that there would be some certainty for her in terms of, um, how you want to expend funds, um, for that next year. And generally, these are two-year plans, uh, so it gives staff times, because some of them are really big plans. I mean, sometimes you take off little pieces and it may take four or five years. Say if it's a major road plan that we're working on and trying to get the state to put funding in for, or the county or what have you. It may be multi-year, but, um, what you'll find in these is that, once you've decided on those goals, it's our responsibility as your staff to come up with specific objectives, is how we're gonna accomplish those. And in the past, we've been very specific on, um, when those are to be done, or what percentage of completion, or what have you, that it really, so when we have the updates, um, then you'll know exactly where we're at. And it makes us all responsible collectively to getting those done. Um, so, uh, the other thing that I would suggest through this process is that we have a subsidiary capital, um, CIP or Capital Investment Plan, um, that is part of this, so that we can see over a multi-year period, um, what we, our needs are. And then again, it helps our fiscal officer in terms of, um, uh, coming up with our budgets and managing our finances. Um, but it also creates some certainty for our department heads. If there's, for instance, equipment that they need, um, and they can drop those on. And then the public can see that in four years, we have a pumper that's due, that has to come up, or we have certain cruisers every year, they're gonna have to be replaced. All those are really important, and I think having the CIP really helps communicate that to the public. Um, and then finally, um, you all would adopt a, a final plan that would be effective for January first of twenty twenty-three. And then every quarter after that, uh, my responsibility as your administrator would be to, uh, fill out, um, a action or, or a update on our action plan, um, so you can know exactly where we're at on all those items. Um, and those would be done again every quarter. Maybe once every six months, I may stand up. So that's the suggested, uh, approach that, that I would have for the trust. Always been successful as well in the apartments. It's not just once I try it once, that becomes, I think, it creates certainty with the apartments. So, that's my presentation, that's, uh, that's my thoughts. But I would wanna get to this point, uh, this is quite a little gather, that's wonderful, soon. Um, so that we, as your staff, maybe do this.
So in, in this, because I, I, I think it's a great idea. Um, but just so I understand, so like each year, we would go through not necessarily steps one and two, but we, we would do step three on annually to try to set new priorities as they go off? Okay.
Every year seems to be a lot.
Yeah, I just was curious about that.
So, if that moves to the past, every two-year period, it seems to work pretty well.
Yeah.
You can always adjust it, so.
Right.
We just killed the first year, and then there's there two left on there, and then, you know, at that point, you say, well, we can come back and, you know, re-strategize.
Right.
Point, but generally, I've found that you've got enough big items in there that you can spend a lot of time.
Right.
Two years, you've.
Then quarterly written updates, of course, will keep you, your finger on the pulse there, and, you know, trying to figure out if you're, if you need anything.
Yeah.
You know, more than two.
Those are not used for your public, well, we'll put on website. Um, so, it's in Jack's fair, it's in exactly our ruling on what the laws, objectives are. But I would say that, again, I think, because of time, I think, and maybe do the, uh, resident survey, but it's something to consider now, because it really does help get a broad section of communities. You know, I know the councils don't want it in the past, they want things they didn't know before, because they came. Last community, a lot of people wanted more streetlights, and then there's other, so council decided not to do that.
Right.
What's your standard point? But this is something that was on the radar, so they may not know about.
No, we've, we've done a couple of surveys, so there may be some data that might be usable. Um, but I, I think it's probably worthwhile doing, because I don't know whether we asked the specific questions that you might wanna see in a survey. So I, you know, maybe take a look at those and see if you can glean any data out of that. But if not, I, we've done, we've surveyed the community a number of times, and we get a pretty decent response, so.
And I know that, uh, these targets work on our language, and this survey is.
Right. Yeah. I, I like it, I'm all for it. What, what do you need us to do? Other than the items, you know, do we, do we have to make a motion or just say, we love it, we'll do it?
I just like having a permit of all three, that's something that's worked well. Well, when it comes to organization, it's worked a lot, always worked, um, hard times. It takes a lot of work.
Well, I think it's been, I think, having a plan. I know you guys are gonna think this is strange coming from me. Um, I mean, it gets us organized, it has us in the right direction, and it puts us together i- in, in a path. We did have that process that we used before, but it wasn't nearly as structured as, as this. And I, I like, I like having the structure.
You need the structure.
I do.
So why they made the cage? I'm not calling the cage, I just, I think it's good for all of us. I, I agree.
You've served too long with me.
Things do never come up that are anticipated. It looks like it's all that, you know, possible is planned, but in some individuals individually, there'll be times where I ask you, you know, what would you like to move down the list?
Right.
Um, because of new items, because we have so much capacity, both from a financial standpoint and a staff standpoint. So, you know, we'll, we'll always ask you that, as to, you know, how you want to. And you may throw that at us and say, well, you know what, you think it's gonna take a little bit longer, I need some analysis compared to that. But, uh, it's not fixed, so if, if something comes in that really is critical to the township, we can't put that on the list.
Well, it's, since, since we have a new administrator, uh, and you, Mr. Williams. Um, and I think this will help actually, not only us, but, but obvious you and all the department heads. And I too, I like outlines and structured plans. I think it creates a framework for accountability. We follow, we check it, we double-check it, we follow up, did we go wrong, whatever. But I'm fully supportive of this, and I, um, appreciate that you brought this to our attention as an, as an option going forward. So you have my support.
Can I ask one quick?
No, you're the lawyer.
Yeah, why? What the heck do you have to do with anything?
When you were going through the chart, it sounded to me like the, the first spec meeting, I think you said that there were to set up the tour of the facilities. And, and, and at the Pierce meetings, as you've seen, Pierce Trusts is very much accept and welcome public input. So I was just wondering, as I was picturing this, if the trustees go tour the facilities, can members of the public go also in the, in the typical process that you, you've seen? Yeah, they can go along through the process and watch what's going on. But again, it's for their electrical issues to really discuss, and you're trying to make them ask the questions along the way. Anyone that wants to come and finish, it's someone who.
It would be like a field trip work session.
Yeah.
Yeah, and in my opinion, having been here for ten years, I think a lot of the citizens will appreciate that and welcome that chance. And they'll also give input to the trustees what they think, because if there's no survey, the citizens will use that opportunity and the fact that these meetings are public to express what they think.
Well, it also might be nice that the public can actually see the facilities.
Yes, I agree. I think it's amazing how many communities, public, never gets a chance to view.
All right, thank you, Ken.
Thank you.
Might, might I suggest you invite Chris in?
Oh.
Might I suggest that you leave?
All right. Do we have any other public input?
Let's just, let's just put it this way, it will be open to the public.
All right, anything else?
Uh, one thing for, oh, you've, you've been waiting a long time, so, no, you, you go first. I'll, after you're done, I'll bring something up. Go ahead.
Go ahead.
I've briefed up here because my intentions were, when I, I've been here since, uh, I had attention mode inside yard. Where it had been overrun before, uh, the terrain is extremely rough. So, I mean, there's a small patch of yard that is in my back, far back corner, um, that, um. My neighbor, when they moved in, decided that they were gonna keep going, so they kept on part of, part of, part of my yard. Um, so I attempted to get a survey or come out with my property, uh, which is plenty. I don't wanna show up. And this is about, about a dollar, a thousand. I found out one guy had come out with it. Uh, he came out, uh, Friday, July twenty-third, stayed in, had it all taken care of. Uh, Sunday, my neighbors took the stakes out.
Hmm.
So, I got over Pierce Township, hadn't come out, because I already had a confrontation with ladies that lives there. I hadn't talked for a sense, but I didn't want to cause any ruckus. Uh, whenever I knocked on the door, uh, the lady would answer, her husband would answer. Pierce Township showed up, gave me the situation, they never handled it. People put the stakes back. The reason I'm here is because, uh, I really don't wanna, I wanted to grow back up. I'm not looking to, to try and change and make it look like a yard. It's a wooded lawn, there's trees all over it. Uh, and the neighbor that I have directly across the street from me at fourteen sixty-six, uh, Denny Drive, I'm at fourteen sixty-five. Uh, so directly across the street at fourteen sixty-six, their yard is exactly the same layout that I have, except they don't do anything with it. Uh, it's just down the road, except genuine, still, very strict, just taken out, that's a lot of the taxes. But, uh, that being said, um, my intentions were to plant, uh, they're called giant grapepuges. Uh, they grow really quick, they're very resistant to any type of disease or anything like that. They're, they're, uh, three to five feet per year, uh, maximum height, you have forty feet high. Um, I plan on bringing those down by property line that I had served, to kind of section off my yard, separate us from the neighbors, um, and just kind of just have my yard. And just fill it in as it goes off. We're adding burr feeders, we have burr feeders everywhere, just thousands of others. The, the fur feeders, the squirrels there are a lot, so if you buy any, I would want to say. But, uh, we're just, we're trying to make it more of a natural, goodbye from my house. I'm like, we want it out from the waterfall, I spend a lot of time, I don't have a crap. But I wanted to let it grow well, I wanna add trees to that property. But in order for me to have that cut down today, that I need, that I need to, I'm just gonna have to have a bush wall or something like that, for me, that it's gonna care of first. I'm, I'm just not coming here to present any guidance. You guys need to discuss it, exactly the session where we need to do, a problem with that, think back, discuss it. How we're gonna handle this fine. But I just wanted you to understand where I'm coming from. I didn't have a problem, the lady would visit, uh, June, July of twenty-one. It's not been cut, or it hasn't been cut since, uh, twenty-seventy. So it's never been done, but as soon as I called the cops about my stakes, two days later, I got a complaint.
Well, yeah, so, I, I mean, I appreciate your patience, first and foremost, it's almost nine o'clock. So, uh, yeah, thank you for enduring this, uh.
At least we've been a little entertain, entertaining.
But maybe if we could have some time to look into it, and then at, um, at the next meeting, we'll discuss it and we'll move you up to the beginning of the schedule of the agenda, so you don't have to wait. Okay.
Eddie? But Eddie? So Eddie, Eddie, what can we, what do we do about situations like his? Where he has a part of his parcel that he wants to turn into green space. And I mean, what, what kind of allowances do we have? And it sounds like he's gonna screen off, you know, at least partially screen off the property. So, I mean, what, maybe I would suggest. Maybe, maybe we can have you sit down with Eddie. And, and, and maybe you just work, work out some sort of a site plan for him. And see if we can't, you know, resolve it that in some way that, I just don't know what, I, I don't know where, where we would be on something like that.
Yeah, I think that would be a good step. Get your info to Eddie and, and meet with him. And then if need be, if, if it needs to be discussed again at next meeting, we'll move it up to the front. We will make you guys sit through the whole thing.
Well, maybe, maybe just work with Eddie and see if there's a way that, you know, we, we can accept his, his lan- landscape plan. You know, something like that.
It's a separate, it, it's a, it's a wooded lot, right? I think it's intuitive sense that you wouldn't necessarily, I don't know if three acres price for me, it's separate lot and I own it. Because it's green space, but I, I do not know.
Send him a letter. Bring him up, buddy.
He needs a letter.
We need, we gotta get a letter.
That was a personal admit, that was a personal admission.
I heard a confession.
On the record.
It was a confession.
Well, we're.
And, and it's on video and we got you on video.
We pride ourselves in being reasonable, so we'll, we'll continue to look into it. All right, yeah, and if, if it needs to be re-discussed at next meeting, sir, but I'm sure, you know, you can have it.
Well, Eddie, why don't, why don't you get, why don't you get your card to the gentleman? And then that way you guys could connect and, and discuss what, what good, what positive next steps we could take.
All right, sounds good.
Now for you guys.
Thanks for attending.
For the, the Boy Scouts in the back, we apologize, this is our normal behavior. So if you're trying to learn about government, tonight was probably not our, our finest night, but it is typical of us, so.
What did you guys do to, yeah, I mean, what?
Yeah, is this a punishment? Oh, so you were forced to be here, yeah. Good answer, good answer.
This brief thing I was gonna bring up, and it's not for vote or anything like that, it's just for discussion and information suggestion. So it was a part of kind of a civics project, if you will. Coach, you know, I, I think we had painters that did a great job in our hall. Quite frankly, those hall, that hallway is pretty darn bland in my opinion. And I, I came up with an idea that maybe would be of interest to the other trustees, our fiscal officer and our public. To line that hallway, this hallway upfront with art produced by our students of this local school district. So West Clermont and near Richmond, perhaps these young people can mount their. Paintings, sketches, what have you on these walls and that could be something that would rotate on an as-needed basis. And not only is it, I think, a nice way to spruce up that boring-looking hallway. But also I think it's a great, you know, opportunity for the young kids to get in here and maybe. Gets, get interested in government, you know, maybe one of those kids will end up being a trustee or fiscal officer or county commissioner or president, who knows? But you just never know what sparks these kids, but something sparked me obviously at some point to do what I do, not only in government, but otherwise. I think this is a good opportunity and I've discussed this briefly with the superintendent of the Clermont, the West Clermont School District. And she seemed to be enthused by the idea of the Assistant Fire Chief's wife has indicated some interest in helping to coordinate something like this. Maybe to lead it, she's got an art background and an education background, showed some really good interest in this. So I think we will have a good start in terms of volunteer labor and talent to get something like this going. So if you folks are in reasonable agreement, unless there's some, well, strong objection, I think this is something I'd, I'd like for us to pursue with the school districts.
Sounds good to me.
Perhaps we should feed it into our new system that we just devised.
Yeah.
Rather than run out and do this, let's put it into the system and put it in its proper place.
Sounds good.
Yeah, let's look at it. I just wanted to introduce it as a concept that you all were supportive that.
I am, I'm supportive, I'm in, I'm in support of putting it into the machinery and seeing how it ranks. That's why we set the process in motion.
Well, I'm, I'm not looking for to spend any money on this, if that, you know. Wait a minute, let me finish. I'm not looking to spend any of the town to this money, money on this. I'm looking to brighten up the, the hallway with some student, free student labor and an opportunity for them to show their talent. So I don't think this is a huge project that necessarily needs to be put into a complicated piece of machinery. I mean, this is just something nice and fru- and fluffy. So I mean, we can, if that's what you're all's preferences, I'm bringing it up for your discussion, but my opinion is that that complicates it. And.
That's why we have, that's why we're talking about.
Well, wait a minute, I wasn't finished. I think it complicates it and I don't think we need to complicate something like this. Now I'm finished.
All right, well, Tim, how quick we're gonna have this meeting, priority thing, fairly quick, I hope. Because we gotta get moving, don't we? I know you're drinking from a fire hose, but.
I can certainly get out to email by the end of the week to each of you to see what potential dates that we could pick to get rolling on this. Obviously, we're gonna start with the, the tour of the facilities.
Yeah, I think for a lot of reasons, it's, we need to get moving on it. All right, any other public comment? You guys did not give a firm answer on what, what you did to get here. I feel like you're holding back. Nothing, no kind of.
Do you guys like my idea?
Kind of, okay. Maybe we'll put it in the machinery.
They got a full education on what they don't want to do tonight, you know?
They're like, sell cars, wash things in a kitchen, be a trustee. I think I'm gonna do the kitchen.
Right.
You know, one thing we forgot to do, I don't know, we took your name for the record. Thanks, the, the record, you know.
You know the record.
You know that record.
There, in the record. Sounds like a Seinfeld thing. There's a record, it's somewhere.
It's going on.
All right, anything else? I have a motion to adjourn.
Don't move.
Second it.
Roll call.
Yes.
Yes, thanks, thanks for coming out, guys, I appreciate it and during it.